Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call the meeting to order November 15th, 5:30 PM at Memorial Town Hall. Under announcements, I've been asked by some of the vets and the Legion and on behalf of the board and the town to go ahead and publicly thank Buster Samansky and his crew for once again putting all the flags out in honor of Veterans Day. So, we just wanted to publicly thank Buster on behalf of the American Legion, the veterans and the town.
And Lenny and Rodder.
And Lenny, and everybody involved in it. And along those lines, not to digress, I happen to be in New Orleans over Veterans Day and visited the World War II Museum, which was absolutely phenomenal. So if any of you ever get to New Orleans, it is incredible. We also have Luminaryum coming up in December, on December 17th, that's a Sunday, Sunday before Christmas Eve. So Luminaryum will be that particular evening. There'll be more to follow on that, but we hope everybody can come down to Town Hall and join us before all the floats and fun start after Santa arrives. Cindy or Ed or Marlene, does anybody have any announcements, public announcements?
No, we did announce that the Veterans Day service was on the 11th. There was actually, there was more people there this year, so that was nice.
Good, good. Ed, do you have anything to...
No, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Right. Next week.
Wish you the very best.
It came upon us quickly, so, alright, agreed. Alright, so that's it for public forum, excuse me, for announcements. Now we'll move into public forum. Is there somebody here or anybody here that wants to speak during the public forum portion that isn't on the agenda? We have the minutes here from October 25th, if there's a motion to accept those?
I think it was the 26th, right? No?
Looking at the date on the...
It was, I agree, we didn't meet the 25th.
Okay. Yes, I moved to accept the minutes of the October's meeting.
Alright, is there a second?
A second.
Is there any corrections or changes that anybody noticed need to be made or any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Good job, Lynn Dunnies. You're welcome. Okay, for posted business, topic number one on the agenda is Black Birch Winery. If you're here, sir?
Yeah.
Alright, why don't you, if you don't mind, if you could just, you know, announce your name and...
Hi, my name is Ian Modesto. I am one of the owners of Black Birch Vineyard. Yeah, I think you guys have met, at least listened to my wife.
Yes.
I was here, I was unable to make that, I apologize.
That's okay, a few weeks ago.
Yes, yes, that's right. And I'm here to just discuss, you guys issued a pouring permit for Black Birch Vineyard for my business on Straits Road. And I'm just, would like to discuss a little bit about the cost of that permit and if, yeah, just a little bit to discuss a little bit about the cost of the permit.
Alright.
The permit is, if I understand correctly, it's $1,200 a year?
A thousand.
A thousand?
Oh, it's a thousand.
Yep.
Oh, that's right, we changed that. Yeah. And so, the, my concern is just that this, the pouring permit allows me to pour glasses of wine for my customers. At my winery, generally, we sell bottles of wine, we sell merchandise, and we sell glasses of wine. The glasses of wine makes up a very small portion of what I, what we do at the winery. We're not geared for that. In other words, we, I'm not establishing this business to sell glasses of wine. It's not, it's very different than, let's take a restaurant where they, that's basically what they do. Most restaurants serve glasses of wine, even though you can get bottles of wine, but that's few and far between. For my business, it's the complete opposite. And so, yeah, I just think that the $1,000 fee is a little high for what I'm doing and the, how often I'm doing it. The hours that are stated on this permit, we actually filed for a, an all-encompassing permit, if you will. Basically, the hours are from, stated on the permit are from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and that, those hours coincide with the farm winery permit, farm winery permit that I have with the state. But they, those were just, we filed for those hours just to give us the most flexibility. We are not open at 8 o'clock. We are open from 12 to 6, from Friday to Sunday. We're not open during the week. So really, we're only open three days. We might change this in the future, and that's why we set it up as, you know, as is, but it's not our, currently, we're not, I don't see us opening on Monday or Tuesday, it's just, we can't do it right now.
Okay.
So, yeah, I...
So, your reason for being here is just see if there could be a reduced fee?
Yeah.
In the, in the $1,000 yearly license fee?
Yeah. So, and also, yeah, and also the yearly license fee, we're, we have a yearly licensed pouring permit, but that's just to give us the flexibility if we're gonna be open yearly. We will be open guaranteed till the end of this year, but I don't know if we're gonna be open in, from January, February, March, or even April.
Okay.
So we're basi, we are operating seasonally with a annual license.
Okay.
Rather than getting a seasonal license than having to get a annual license.
Sure.
It just allows us greater flexibility. So that's, yeah.
Alright.
And I just, yeah, I mean, would just like to discuss the fee and if that's what you guys initially envisioned with that fee. I know Linda did a lot of, most of that work, I just don't know what, what you guys have to say about that.
Sure. Does anybody have a comment to make before I do?
Well, I'm just wondering what your actual plans are for the year. Are you definitely gonna be seasonal, are you only gonna go so many months, are you gonna change your hours?
Yeah, I honestly, I can't say. I don't know. I honestly have no idea. And that's why, I understand that this is a yearly, and I, we set that up as such.
It was set up as an annual license.
Yeah.
Currently, it is an annual license.
It is, right. Yeah.
I mean, would, would you be committing tonight saying that I definitely will not be doing anything like January, February, March, and, or, or you're ready to commit to...
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
Or...
I, I'm not, I'm not. Cause I think I, we, we have to assess things at the end of the year and see how things go. I literally don't even know how I'm gonna plow the driveway. Do you know what I mean? Simple logistic things like that, I don't even know how I'm going to deal with that. So, even within the yearly license, however, the, the hours as stated, the Monday through, we most definitely were, the way, not most definitely, hate to use that word, but I don't see us being open the entire week. We're literally open on the weekends. That's when we get most traffic during the week in the winters. For a farm winery is really, for most farm wineries, even in the Finger Lakes where they do much greater business, it's, it's hard to be open during those hours and be actually sustainable.
That was one of my questions, but what I don't, but I don't quite, what I'm not quite following, okay, it's a yearly license, and I believe we prorated it for the last two months.
Yeah, yes, yes, thank you. Yes, I understand.
Yeah, we can't go to hourly if that's what you're looking at with the hours.
No, I'm not trying...
It's, with, I'm not following, how, how are you proposing there's a reduction?
Well, a fee is not really, a fee is not set based on hours.
That's what I mean, you can't go hourly on something like this because of your hours.
It's my understanding that it was, and that's why I'm, yes. That's, that's exactly what I'm...
Okay. Yeah, it's not based on hours is what I was trying to get at, and I didn't know if that's what you're looking for.
I think we definitely wanted you to be able to come forward. I don't think we exactly knew what you may be asking, so, so, I would state that the license is the license, right? And if you choose to open one day a week or seven days a week, that, that's up to you or, or any business to do so.
Okay.
But the, but the licenses are not, are not based upon the number of days open or the number of hours open for any given day. The fee is the fee, it's a yearly fee, whether you're open one day or seven days or no days.
Okay.
That's, that's how the program is, or, not this program, but that's how the licensing's fees are set up right now.
Okay. Alright.
So, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. I at least wanted to have this discussion, I didn't know...
No, and that's fine, and that, and that's okay, and I for one in the board wish you much success. We heard great things.
Thank you.
Been there, actually, but, but that is, the, the fees are a yearly fee regardless of how often it's used, basically.
Okay. Alright. And I do thank you for the, for the truncated fee for the last two months of the year rather than the...
Well, we wanna be fair, right?
Yeah.
But, you know, if you got into trying to do it more on a daily or hourly, it would just be impossible, so.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Alright.
Alright. Is there anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Modesto.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Topic number two on tonight's agenda is a little update on Phase Two of the Town Hall renovations. So I see Kevin in the back running up here to come forward and with easel and drawings and everything.
Kevin, do you have anything you'd like, oh, you did bring an easel, I was gonna say we have something in the back or...
Why don't we ask John, the corner?
Where's your best angle?
You can put it from the...
Cause we can slide.
Put it on the end or over here?
Over there.
Okay.
Whatever, I guess, probably if you have to speak to it or... So Kevin's actually gonna give us an overview and an update as to Phase Two of Town Hall renovations are gonna be kicking off soon, and some, some dates and some strategies as we move forward with that process.
Sure. So, thank you for having us. Good evening.
Welcome back.
Thank you, it's nice to finally be here. So, just for general introduction, Kevin Rothschild Shea, I'm the principal of Architecture Yale. I'm here with Brendan Stratton, my lead project architect, who will help me fill in the blanks on some of the details and...
Yep, thank you.
Turn some pages if we need to. So I'll start with a general update, if you will, which is the, the prime focus of our appearance tonight. It's been a little while, took us a little while to get through the legalities of the contract, and we're, we're happy to be moving the ball forward. So basically, to, to back up and recap, we are looking at basically a $1.6 million renovation or accessibility improvements, which basically accounts for a ramp up to the entrance, a ramp down to the lower level, largely accessing the senior center and those activities, an interior elevator, fire suppression system, electric service upgrades, and after that, then there's, you know, secondary improvements that support those prime directives, if you will. So things that have happened since we met informally some, some months ago, one, the town has acquired a site survey, which has been transmitted to us, and that serves as the base sheet for our landscape architect to build the site development plan on. We've been back to the site with our engineers, Brendan came up here with all our electrical mechanical engineers, got them oriented and basically, you know, refocused the, this phase of this project, got the engineers, a slightly new team familiar with the work that was completed in the offices that we're in tonight, plus looking at the existing conditions and everything we'd be, we'd be facing. Parallel to that, we've got Cardinal ATC testing, existing materials and surfaces in preparation of managing the specifications in the bid. So if there's any discovery of any environmental hazards that need to be specified or mitigated, that we're aware of those, and we can include those in, in the project specification, you know, AKA maybe some, you know, asbestos tile under a kitchen cabinet or something, or in the kitchen, or the elevator area, so that that way, that work is captured and that's included in our, our engineering team and scope of services, so that, that's begun. In terms of, we also updated the flow test. We performed the water flow tests in the street, that's basically a test that tests the water pressure and flow that's out in the street, and that, that test is the basis for the engineering and the calculation for a fire sprinkler system. So, the, the first one had been done, you know, many moons ago, and we had carried a budget to retest it. We've talked with Marlene, the, the new cost, the new test came out significantly higher than our original budget, and we've also shared and countered that because we have a lower cost for our construction estimator, who we, who we had to replace because our original estimator retired due to some personal and health concerns. So, so we're basically, you know, working with the town and managing those costs. So right now, we, you know, just in terms of some of our additional separate fees, we're, we have about a $400 delta, but we, we're proposing to carry those and manage those as we go through the work, and, you know, quite frankly, I'm not worried about $400 relative to our gross contract. If we have to write an adjustment, we will, but we also wanna track that against printing and other budgeted reimbursable expenses, like some of the testing is budgeted. You know, some of these line items had to be budgeted because we couldn't, you know, see all the way into the future to see what the final cost or expenses might be. So overall, we're making good progress on that. The important thing to note on the water test is that the, the pressure and flow came out slightly lower than it did, was it three or five years ago in the original report?
Five years ago.
So, a lower flow, pressure, pressure and flow result impedes upon the sprinkler design. We need, we need volume and we need pressure to push water through a sprinkler system. So that is, you know, that engineering and that work is, is managed by our fire protection engineer, and that is worked into our, our system, so we'll, we'll recap that in a second. So other than that, Brendan's been basically working through coordinating the building, the site, setting the firm and, you know, construction-related dimensions for all the elevations for the ramp, coordinating with the ramp and the structure, and then working the elevator into the building and getting to all the specifics. So in round numbers, we're about 30%, you know, in terms of our work to date. It's not a perfect linear path, some pieces are pushing further forward in terms of construction detailing and calculation, and others are, you know, swimming around as we, we try to nail them down and pull the, pull the multiple trades, trades together. So we have a whole bunch of sheets, but, you know, maybe I'll just have Brendan show you a couple key plans, a site plan, a building plan. We have a reduced set, which we can leave with the board tonight. How many, what do we have, Brendan, about 40 sheets of progress drawings? So it's, so it, you know, we don't need to work through all 40 sheets of development, but it shows the board, you know, between the landscape architecture, the architecture, the structural, electrical, mechanical engineering, all the trades are on board, pulling the preliminary design together and building towards, towards that final product, if that makes sense.
That's fine with, with me. And along that process, when you and Brendan are making the presentation, as we speak to certain things, will, will some preliminary or definite, definite dates, I mean, do we have some dates in mind as far as kicking this off and probably, probably what the townspeople wanna know and, and the board as well is kind of, here's when we anticipate starting and here's where we plan on starting, and these would be the offices on second, first floor, downstairs, whatever, are gonna be affected around this timeframe. I mean, I think that's sort of what, what people are looking for.
Fair enough, understanding. So Brendan's got a few critical dates. So at this milestone, what we own in the contract is an updated construction estimate at the design development phase. So we're, right now, we're past schematic into design development. So we are circulating this set of drawings that will update the budget that was generated by Moroi prior to town meeting last, this past year. They all kinda blur together.
Yeah.
So that's, that's happening. From that, that estimate will take, we think outside of two weeks from now, that will be returned. That doesn't stop our forward progress. Then from there, we work through, you know, if that budget has any concerns, we review those with, with the board, and that informs the, the, the design and/or if anything, you know, material selections that we, we work to keep and steer the, the project on budget. From there, it's, it's about a month of construction drawings towards the end of December, where we owe, or, and/or the terms of the contract require an 80% construction document cost estimate. So basically, when the, the drawings are nearly complete, but not complete, that budget is then revisited and firmed up, so that if there's any escalations or concerns, the final drawings can be tweaked to, to, you know, keep the, that budget in check, in which case, we're looking at going out to bid in, basically in a mid-January to late-January window, which would then take probably four to six weeks to bid and contract the project, which would then push us round numbers where we approach in March.
March.
Which case then, we would have probably nine months of construction, which would take us all the way to the end of 18. Recognizing the AEB date of September 18, I'm quite confident that, and the board is already happy to hear...
So as you, as you get closer, you'll have a pre-construction meeting, so...
Yes.
We can get things organized here with everybody.
Final point about whose office moves...
So right now, March is when you might be bringing out the hammers.
Yeah. Come, come spring and summer, everybody's gonna be moving. Do we have the finer points of who moves when? No. So we're a little off the original projected schedule, and that's mostly because it took us a while to get through the, the contract and get the project into the queue and mobilize, but, you know, we're pretty, you know, steadily marching right through that process now. It's kind of a all-hands-on-deck, I think. So is that...
Yeah.
You know, we will have to update the board, you know, AEB will be looking come September to say, okay, you're done. So before that, we will communicate with them and we'll be telling them where we're at and what we expect, so...
Sometimes, sometimes late February, you should have a, a more accurate picture of where you're at and when you're gonna start, so...
Yeah, so we will be back one or two more times with the board, maybe informally meeting with Marlene or Phil to go over any nuts and bolts or particulars that, you know, don't require the entire board, and maybe some of that might just be talking about departments, you know, scheduling, because we have to write some of the movement or phasing or relocation of people into the specification, so that when the contractor shows up, he or she understands what is going to be involved with the work, when people will move, what floors they'll have access to and when, because any delays or adjustments and that costs them time or money, and that has to be factored.
We're just wondering at that point whether some of the contractors may adjust their schedules, if you're gonna like jackhammer the elevator, if possibly, they might start having an earlier start date or a weekend or something. I know weekend has a problem, it might be time and a half, but, you know, things like that.
Right, and those are the kind of things we put in the specification, so if there is, you know, critical times, you know, say the electric service, we have to shut the power down the building, you know, what are the minimal or maximum shutdown periods? When can they occur? Obviously, they would strive to minimize that, they wouldn't, you know, they would work right up to the point that they can make the final connections and switch over, but even that could, you know, even on a hustle day, maybe a four to eight hour transition.
Where, where in the process do we have some input to work with that? Work with June, say, okay, you're at the point where you're gonna schedule things, is that more like March or April, or is that more...
Before we finish the specs, so it would be probably December, maybe we would fine-tune and finalize it in early January, cause that will be in the spec that the contractor will bid from, because those controls and those limitations affect how they manage the job and manage the time. So if it has to be after hours or on premium time, or if there's limitations where they can only work from, you know, 5:00 AM to, to 9:00 AM, or, you know, you, you know, they have to know that so that the town hall can be up and running, or if, you know, maybe we talk about, well, you know, we need a Friday afternoon off or Wednesday afternoon, we, we work with you folks to see what your town hall hours are, what's, what's, you know, what's the easiest way to manage all that, so. But that will happen before we're done, and it has to be, and we include that in the spec, because if we don't, the contractor say, well, that's gonna cost me extra, I'm gonna charge you overtime, I gotta work a Saturday, I gotta, you know, we want all that captured in the project manual, so that it's bid, bid the way you need it to be bid. So, it's, you know, there'll be, you know, be a lot of nuts and bolts.
Yeah, and a lot of back and forth conversation.
Yeah, so that's gonna, you know, some of those, you know, some of the micro organization we can typically do with, with Marlene or Phil, and then bring that back to the board for an overall review, you know, to the degree that, you know, Marlene and Phil and you folks, you know, wanna be involved or how you want us to manage that, you know, kind of communication process, but, so...
Okay.
You know, that's just kind of the normal part of, you know, what we do to get a project out. But it is important because it affects the schedule and the cost in the bid, so that's, you know, to us, that's important to, to get that written into the spec, so.
Yeah, just, you had mentioned that this phase was addressing the handicapped access to the first floor here. Is that going to remain on the south side of the building?
Yeah. Yep, so Brendan, can you give a quick walkthrough?
And my second question was, when that part of it's under construction, are there plans for something like a temporary ramp or whatever, so it's still handicap accessible?
Well, those are the questions that we'll have to get to, and honestly, temporary access will be very limited or restrictive. We could, we could talk about whether it's doable, and quite often, we find out there are so many hoops to jump through, it's, it's easier to come up with a temporary accommodation and an alternate location for a period of time, and those are the kind of things that we will have to discover, where your departments, you know, boards or members will have to, you know, learn or understand what works best, cause don't forget, in terms of electrical and sprinkler work, they will be working corner to corner in the building, even if they're running pipes and painting an exposed pipe, if they are, or even here, they'll be pulling ceiling tiles and resetting them. So, in terms of the sprinkler work, you know, it's, it's a, it's a manageable piece, but it will touch all corners of the structure. So big questions like that, the, on the lower level, the concern there is whether it's safe, whether, you know, even if you can make the accommodation, whether it's comfortable, whether it's quiet, whether it's clean, you know, all those have to be factored in. And quite honestly, in terms of time and cost, the contractor would much rather have the space available, so, so they can just get in, do their work and get out. So for everybody, the price is better and the time is shorter. The more, you know, the more jumping around, the more coordination, the more movement, that just adds time and money to the project, which, which never helps us, but it's always limited by what your, what the, the client, the towns' needs are, what the flexibility is, what the alternatives are. So, and some of these things we've kinda touched on over time.
Right.
But now we are, you know, approaching the 11th hour, where we have to start writing these things down once and for all for real. And we know with some of the upcoming meetings and presentations, you know, with this, with the senior center, you know, we'll probably be revisiting our preliminary plans, not tonight, but in, in a little closer detail to make sure everybody's satisfied, cause we, you know, in the meeting, we accepted the alternate kitchen, which is larger, relocated in the building inspector, and, so, so to that degree, I, it might be, even if it's a, an obvious, a simple overview, I mean, I'm not sure how much time you folks want us to take, but I think it's important for Brendan to at least walk through the lower level, and then the couple upper levels, and then the elevation on the front, just so you can, you know, after all these months, kinda see where we're heading. Does that make sense?
Sure, that's fine.
So...
And very similarly to how it's laid out now, we're gonna have a ramp which comes down to this basement area, we're gonna come through the same doorway, and then when you come around, you'll have the elevator lobby, small elevator lobby, elevator will be here. As it continue down the main corridor, we're gonna relay out this kitchen, cause of course we're absorbing some of the space of the existing kitchen space, so we're dispossessing or moving that over to this office. This office is gonna be part kitchen, part file storage, and so that means we're upsetting the building inspector office, which will be down in the southeast corner, small closet in there, we're gonna refinish this, insulate the wall, and we'll have to modify the doorways cause currently they're not to code, so we'll eliminate one of the doors, provide a new door into the office. And then we also have a little work to do over in the, where the water and electrical come in, the new electrical service will come in this corner. The new electrical service will come in this corner, um, all the sprinkler equipment will be lined up here, this office gets a little smaller. And we'll reconfigure there towards the rear. We have to renovate a little bit the existing stair, that's not to code. Um, so our intent is to pour over it, to extend, uh, provide a landing at the top, um, and provide an area refuge at the bottom of the stair, in order to provide, um, code compliant access up and through here. We're gonna have to do a little work here to make this, uh, fire rated enclosure, which means we'll have to build up above the storage. Right now, that storage wall doesn't continue all the way to the, to the floor. And that's a majority of what we're doing on the basement. On the first floor.
Brendan, if you could, for one second, Cindy or Ed, did you have any questions on, on that particular? Okay, I, I just.
I just have a quick question. Those stairs you were just referring to are in the back of the building, correct?
So that really gives a code compliant egress out the, the end of the senior center, uh, which really, the stairs and there's no landing at the top, it's, it's, it's not to code, it's not safe, it's not rated. And in addition to the elevator, this gives an area refuge, you know, for, uh, you know, wheelchair safety and, you know, to communicate in the event of a fire, somebody can't get out.
Yeah, right, I, I mean, I, I think the important thing with lots of these renovations are, it's not only to bring us, um, to meet the commitment we made to be, uh, to have the fire suppression and, and be handicapped accessible by next fall. Uh, but it, it's also gonna add another layer or a potential layer of safety for, for the, the people either visiting or working in town hall, you know, as you said, you know, to get to the top of the stairs and have a landing, so you, you know, you're protected. I mean, you know, and, and become code compliant, I mean, we, you know, gotta be safe.
Yeah, so we're not just, yeah, like, or to reiterate, we're not just providing access down here, but we're, we're modifying the existing entries so that they are safe, so that they are code compliant, um, bring them up to, so if we're going to, um, provide a small little, um, courtyard here where we come up the ramp, we will have a similar stair access, um, instead of having to flare it out, we're gonna square it off. We'll have a, a sidewalk, which follows along here, instead of stepping out right into the travel access. So there's a little bit of a buffer between pedestrian and the, and the driveway, um, then you come up the ramp, come in. Um, modifications here will be minimal, cause essentially all we're doing is putting in the elevator itself. Uh, we'll modify a slight lobby here, um, but for the most part, on the first floor, all the work's gonna be done, you know, at grade level or below to provide that ramp and the elevator. I think we have an elevation here somewhere. Idea of what that might look like.
So we're kind of leaving the world of the colored renderings that we floated around early in the process and moving into the, the black and white.
Sure.
Hard line, nut and bolt.
Yeah.
Drawings it takes to, uh, to, to construct it.
And the thought here is to clad this ramp with brickwork, so it'll tie into the building instead of being, you know, the plain concrete. As you know, that ramp's, you know, disintegrating, so we'll put, um, we'll put a small cheek wall there with precast, uh, concrete cap. We'll put, uh, the black steel rail, similar to what we have on the existing stair over here that we put in, you know, three years ago. A couple of light posts, uh, with a little bit of an accent to it, um, try to capture a little bit of the vernacular as well as, um, be able to light this whole area. We will put a, uh, cover similar to what we have out there. We'll have to cover the lower ramp, uh, to prevent, you know, as much snow and water as getting down there as possible. And so essentially, hopefully, it ties in, uh, a lot better than the existing ramp does now with the existing building. I'm not sure if there's anything else you wanna.
That's where the sidewalk would be as well.
And the sidewalk would be, well, would be right down here. That's the grade level, you come here, go up the stairs if you need to, if not, most, most people are parking at the rear. You can travel by this stair here, come, come up the ramp or down the ramp, depending on which floor you wanna access.
I mean, things to know, like Brendan pointed out, that, you know, we'll have a, a, a formal straight on stair that doesn't taper up to a very narrow opening at the top. The, uh, the ramps are longer than the ramps you have, because they're both illegal, and so we're working.
And the bottom one doesn't have an intermediate landing as well, so we have to put the landings in and so.
Sure, yes, and the landing adds length to the ramp. So, you know, so it's eating up a little bit more land out there, it's, uh, you know, you know, it's, it's, it's very similar in concept to what is there. Uh, qualitatively, it's, it'll be a significant upgrade. At least that, you know, appropriate to what we've talked about, you know, for a town hall. You know, the, the roof structure will be a little bit cleaner and I think a little bit, uh, more appropriate than what's there, it'll be a membrane roof. We, you know, we, early talks discussed green roofs and lattice work and all that, but those weren't, um, factored into the final funding, um, so basically it'll be just, you know, a clean roof structure with, you know, integral drainage and roof drainage, the water will be managed, not just dripping down the sidewalk or landing at the bottom.
What type of materials on the roof?
Well, it'll be, it's a membrane, so really it's rubber. So the, well, there's a lot of technical variations, but, um, there's anything from a, a, a white to a gray to a black are the three typical colors, depending on what material option. The gray actually chalks off kind of, or, you know, it's, it's black, but it kind of chalks off to a medium gray. Some people don't like that, their irony is it actually, um, hides a lot more dirt than the, the white looks beautiful on the first day and then after that, it's just all dirt and leaf stains. Uh, we do see white as the current trend on, on buildings, because it has a much lower, uh, you know, higher reflectance or lower heat island effect, you know, in New England, it's not a guaranteed better performer in, in terms of heat gain and heat loss. Uh, the black roofs can be hot in the summer, so if you're walking past the black roof, it can, you know, you'll feel the heat radiating off of it. So like decisions like that, we haven't come to a final conclusion on, uh, the gray is in the mid, obviously the halfway point. Except the gray tends to not look wonderful against a traditional brick building, it's, it looks more like a modern material against a traditional brick and it's, it kind of doesn't, quite often it doesn't come off right. So those are the things that we will, we'll talk about, we'll bring samples up and we'll, we'll work towards, you know, uh, best recommendations on. Things that have come up recently in development that are, uh, worthy of conversation, not in the original scope or budget, but one of our engineers, um, raised the, uh, uh, prospect of, uh, ice melt system on the ramp. That's one of those that's a great idea, but either you need a boiler and your boilers are not modern with a, you know, with basically, uh, uh, a manifold and distribution and heat loops, um, yeah, and or electric. So electrics tend to be less expensive to go in and maybe cost a little more to operate. So these are things that we could, we're, we're saying out loud to talk about. We're in the original scope, might make sense, might make sense to consider, consider as a bid alternates. And certainly for us, as a service to you, um, and, and these are very new conversations for us, you know, now we're kind of coming out of the ground in terms of pulling all our engineering team together. Makes sense for us to present to you in terms of what the costs are in terms of installation options or limitations and or operational costs, so that we can at least do the right thing going forward. We've done other ramps where we've just roughed in the heat, um, uh, with the intention that the client would eventually, you know, come along with a new boiler system, whatever else, and then they could tap into it, but, you know, you, this ramp's been out there since what, the seventies Phil, eighties? So, you know, thirty years and, uh, this concrete's gonna be here for, for, for quite some time. So we wanna, you know, give you folks good guidance on, on options also going forward as, as, as we come across these design ideas, so. Other than that, I don't know Brendan, do we have any other, you know, we're not even showing you the progress on, you know, the mechanical, electrical, structural. But, um, we're, um, we're also working and communicating with your, uh, separately contracted, um, landscape architect for the, we call it the park out here. So some of what she's drawn, um, is impacted by our work right on, uh, the, call it the northeast corner, is that right? Yeah, northeast corner of the building, so, you know, one, we need to keep that dialogue open between us, the town and the town and that engineer, we're fine to talk to them, but, you know, you folks are a critical linchpin and, uh, you know, partner in that, in that conversation. So we, you know, we'd be interested in, uh, getting some feedback on where the bidding and contracting is on that, because we wanna make sure that any adjustments. And that's why, you know, your landscape architect reached out to us, uh, you know, some, some months ago. So we do need to hear more about where that bid and contract are and what the expectations are, because the two pieces of work do need to be coordinated. And, um, you know, we think the, 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 the theme is relatively minor, but there is a juncture where both projects will touch each other, so.
Yeah, essentially in this corner right here, cause as we bring the new electrical service and the new water in, your sidewalk, and of course it's not just right here, there's a sidewalk coming here and then you're gonna relocate these, uh, memorial plaques. So one, we don't wanna disturb the area where those are going in, but if we coordinate the construction before some of this work, we can get in entrenched and put our, you know, services in before they even come out to relay out the part. But again, it depends on when they're bidding their project.
That did, that went out to bid, the construction and the board of selectmen have awarded the contract. Uh, I expected they'll be approving the contract, um, next Monday or Tuesday. I met with the, uh, contractor last week as well as the architect for the project. And, you know, depending on weather conditions, um, there is some work that they may be able to, to do. But they, they expect that, you know, most of the work will probably be in the springtime. They were talking about maybe putting up a fence. I don't know how soon they would do that, but probably not until actual construction starts.
Well, we can talk, you know, more specifically, but even there, we don't want a temporary construction fence or a work limit line established by that contract, which then has to get moved. One, we don't want them to have to move it at some expense to you, or two, have our, you know, our contractor's not gonna wanna move their fence. So, you know, it's just the dotting the i's and crossing the t's, if we can manage the sequence of work or if we get a, if there's a submittal from them on where the fence is gonna go, we're happy, you know, you're, you're communicating with that architect and contractor, you know, to the degree that makes sense, you keep us in the loop. Cause if they, you know, we ask for them, it's, okay, give us a layout of where your construction fence is gonna go. And or we can show what we know on terms of site and make sure that they stay clear or, it's not hard, but.
I, I find it encouraging that we're already having a coordinated, a conversation about coordinated efforts, which aren't gonna happen till spring, so.
Right, but the reality is, if we bid and start.
Absolutely, I just, I just think it's, um, it's, it's encouraging, you know, for me personally or as a board of selectmen member, to, to know that we've got two different projects going that are gonna overlap somewhat and that the conversation's already started, so appreciate that and also appreciate that from, uh, from the, the folks doing the, the park.
So there again, we do rely on, you know, the board or Marlene. You know, we're happy to talk to them directly, but, you know, ultimately, we speak and answer to you, as, as do they and, you know, we don't, we don't want it to gonna go around in.
No, no, it's great. Marlene is the go-to person, uh, Marlene and Phil for the building and, and, and working with the, the two, uh, contractors, so.
I think, I don't know, did we miss anything else off of our cheat sheet?
Do you guys have any questions for Kevin or Brendan, just at this point?
So, do we know from Brian when we'll have the, um, testing results back?
Well, he was even here today doing tests, as far as the results, he didn't say when he'd get the test results back. But he also did say he'd have to come back at some point to do a test cut in, um, in the first office over here uh, where the elevator eventually will be, um, so he can just test the flooring and any adhesives below it, um, which would be saw cut, so he said he could even do it after hours or, or, you know, five o'clock, come in, cause he's gotta run a power saw, doesn't wanna disturb operations. Um, I figure we can coordinate that later, we don't have to do it right now, but, um, but as far as the test results, we'll probably get it back, uh, early next week for the other tests that he's done. He's also confirming what they had tested the first time around four years ago when we're doing construction as well. They're just, uh, double checking what they had, um, in their paperwork, uh, see what else needs to be tested for the newer sites of construction. But again, probably won't hear from him until earlier in the middle of next week.
Makes sense, you know, the, and really what is mostly, you know, other than the obvious where the elevator goes through, the, the sprinkler pipes penetrate a lot of walls and a lot of floors, so he has to look, you know, left and right, top to bottom. Because we don't wanna be, you know, penetrating or drilling anything that's, you know, has any kind of environmental limitations. It's really not hard to manage it, but it does affect the cost of the work, the schedule of work and the specs, so.
I, I think the bottom line for, for us and, and the employees of, of town hall is, you know, we can try to coordinate it as best we can moving forward, right? And, and things happen, I, I think we all realize that, but if we at least have a plan and attempt a coordinated effort on what, when and where, it, it just helps, because we've got a lot of departments, as you know, uh, gonna be affected by this and we're trying to give everybody as much of a heads up as possible. Again, we realize things change for whatever reason, but, you know, if, if we've got a, if we've got a plan, then, then that's good.
And I think we'll have to, you know, dive into that a little bit more. You know, if, say they're up here working and there's offices and they're doing sprinkler piping, it might be somebody's upset for the morning or the day. Downstairs, I think, uh, will be a, a much greater upset, especially with the kitchen being affected. The, the main room of the senior center is less affected, except as it relates to access and if, uh, you know, continuation of service, you know, is the obvious concern there. But I think the, yeah, I think the overall, you know, schedule and impact will be pretty well managed throughout the course of the work, obviously. But suffice it to say, building, the community center, the senior center, especially the kitchen areas, where the areas where the elevator cut through, you know, whoever's in those rooms, you got a few months to clean your office, you know. So that's the, you know, that'll be a big one, poor billiard's factor, you know. He's got some, he's got some homework, so.
Great, anything else, Cindy?
Great, thank you very much Kevin, yeah, and we know you'll be in touch with Marlene and then we'll get the information we need to, uh, in the next few weeks, cause I know December's a.
I expect, you know, we can talk schedule, but we'll probably be back, you know, at late, probably, probably one or, you know, each successive month, just to, just to report back and update.
Great.
Fair enough.
Yes, thank you.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Bet, thank you for the update.
So we can leave you a small aside, I guess, just for, just for record?
That would be great, thank you.
We can always give it to you digitally if you want, it's, uh.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Phil, we have a six-thirty meeting with the board of assessors, if, we've got a couple of things under the DPW director's report that we can, uh, we can address and, and, oh, there goes Kyle. So we have a meeting in, in five minutes with the assessors. It's a scheduled meeting, so. Hearing, hearing. Nope, that's, that's fine. I was just, I don't know where Kyle, and Kyle, would you mind coming forward to, well, Kyle, the building inspector? So let's do the, in our packet, we have requests for a, an abatement.
Yeah, it's for 50 King Street, a sewer abatement. When we generate the accounts, we turn the, we turn on the sewer side of, of the account. And the sewer is accessible there, that property, but they haven't hooked into it yet. It's not up and running. So they were charged a minimum payment of seventy-five dollars and are not using it, so.
Okay, your recommendation is to abate that seventy-five dollars. Is there a motion for that abatement?
Make a motion to accept the abatement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, thank you. And the other topic we wanted to just get an update on, out on Route 5 and 10, we're looking to have the sewer extended. And Kyle and Phil and Marlene have been working with, with some businesses out there and some of our state legislators to apply for grants, look for grants to, to help us and do that sewer extension. So this is out on, I don't know what the numbers of the street are, but.
West Street, 15 West is Steeble Eltron, which wants to move up the road more towards just on the end of West Street.
So they're, they're looking to expand their, their business and build.
They're going to keep that plant, but they want to build a, you know, I guess would be still a warehouse, but light manufacturing, mixed office space, phase one, then residential apartments would be phase two.
Which, which would help us as, as a town with, with the affordable housing that we're, and sustainable housing that we're trying to work on.
Express, they'd like to do, you know, solar for the apartments and, and, you know, make them efficient.
Okay, so we had a meeting back in the fall with, with some of those custo, with, with some of the businesses out there. At Representative CoCot and Representative Rosenberg's office. And I just didn't know if there had been any further movement on the, do you, do you know? And they, they were going to help us apply for the grant or, or help us push for the grant. And I don't know if the timeframe has extended or, excuse me, has, has completed or.
My understanding from Erica Gee's is they were, the reps were waiting, that's Steeble's architect. They were waiting for an application, but from talking to Phil, I guess the application is done electronically and it's locked, I guess.
Which means the date must be, or, or something has closed.
Grant, this, this round was due earlier than normal. It's usually not due, it was, it was due before we even had that meeting. So we were locked out. Of course, you know, I'm touching base with a few Western Mass delegates and to see if there's any way we can manually submit it. And if there is any kind of a pocket of money left from other Mass Works projects. Haven't heard back yet. My feeling is no, we'll probably have to wait till the next Mass Works grant.
This is the, and the Mass Works grant is, correct me if I'm wrong. The Mass Works grant is what we were able to secure when, to do the water line, is that? That was a different grant?
The Mass Works grant for Hatfield was to do the sidewalks.
The sidewalks, okay.
We did the sidewalk project under the Mass Works grant.
So if anybody has contact, you had mentioned made perhaps a maybe placing calls. I think it would be advisable maybe to get the more, the merrier. To try to get this through, because they seemed to be quite pro, pro getting us, you know, money, so. And Steeble's case, that's a very large project, so. Very large, and I have others that want in on, on West Street.
Well, that's what I was going to say. So not only would the project help Steeble, but any other business that, you know, from the bottom of Chestnut Street, right, not going back.
Scape's Builders.
Scape's Builders was here.
They have purchased property down there.
Doug Blowers, he wants to do some construction over there for, and locate his business over at West. But there's quite a few bigger, even big players that want parcels along there that need sewer, so.
The only, the only positive note that I really see here is that, you know, since the grant application has closed and the awards are probably going to be made shortly, if not they already have, they'll know exactly what they awarded and who didn't qualify. So there might be a pocket of money there. There might be.
For this particular round.
I did touch base with what I said with the Western Map delegate. And, you know, he assured me that if there's any pockets of money, even from previous Mass Works projects that didn't come to fruition or came in under budget. You know, he will help us. But the whole thing to the whole process is to be able to manually submit, because we cannot do it online.
Maybe it would be a good idea if the Board of Selectmen drafted a letter, put together a letter to the reps. You know, kind of urging the importance of this, that it would help us with our housing needs and, you know, the growth of a, a business that definitely wants to expand and stay within Hatfield.
And jobs.
Yeah, jobs, jobs, yes.
Yeah, I agree. I certainly don't have a problem with the, the board submitting or sending something that. And by the way, I just wanted to make sure, so, so Representative CoCot and Representative Rosenberg's office were here and were very supportive. I didn't, I don't want to give the impression that they weren't, so. I think, again, it, it is a timing issue. If we can find some pockets of money that have, have not been used in previous projects, that would be awesome. I guess the good news would also be if, if we're not, we're already hopefully ahead of the game for the next round of grants that will become available. Because we've got our engineer working on putting, has already put it together, right, for the submission. And we've already got the legislators lined up, so.
But once again, the squeaky wheel usually gets the grease, so. If we keep on it and on it.
We'll keep squeaking.
Okay, did you guys have any questions about this?
Not on that topic, no.
Not on that topic.
I don't know if we need a motion to create a letter or.
I don't think so.
And we should just be able to put a letter together and send it, right?
We can send it out. It's, all three of us could sign it. I think that would be appropriate. Okay.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. So we have a 6:30 tax classification hearing, which is in about one minute. So Tony, we're going to ask the, if you don't mind, we'll have the assessors sit in the first row. We, we can pick up that topic in a little while. Hi Ron, hi Scott, hi Jenny. Is Stan coming?
Stan will be here now.
Okay, I, I didn't want to start without, so. Okay. All right, so it is 6:30. So we're going to call the meeting to order, the, excuse me, the, the public hearing to order for November 15th, Memorial Town Hall Meeting Room, 6:30 PM. Board of Selectmen are meeting with the Board of Assessors.
So the assessors' recommendations, the Board of Assessors recommends that a factor of one be adopted for FY 2018. This will keep a single tax rate for all classes of property in Hatfield. The Board of Assessors recommends that no open space discount be granted for FY 18. The Board of Assessors recommends that no residential exemption be granted for FY 18. The Board of Assessors recommends that no small commercial exemption be granted for FY 18.
Okay, thank you. So we have, in front of us, we have a list of motions. So I'll make a motion to move the Board of Selectmen adopt a factor of one for fiscal year 2018 to maintain a single rate for all classes in Hatfield as recommended by the Board of Assessors. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. I'll make a motion to move the Board of Selectmen not grant an open space discount for fiscal year 2018 as recommended by the Board of Assessors. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? I'll make a motion, move that the Board of Selectmen not grant a residential exemption for fiscal year 2018 as recommended by the Board of Assessors. Is there a second? Further discussion? All those in favor? Make a motion to Board of Selectmen not grant a small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2018 as recommended by the Board of Assessors. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thanks. Were there, thank you, Jenny and.
So I also need LA 5 signed by the Board of Selectmen. That's excess levy capacity. And that number will be filled in once the remainder of the recap stuff is finalized. So I will get that to Marlene once it's done. So I just need that signed tonight.
By all three of us?
Yes, please.
Okay, I don't, okay. Did, well, we're looking at this, so was there any public comments, by the way, on this? This is a hearing, so if anybody had any comments? Do you guys have anything else you wanted to add to this?
Jenny, what, what figure is?
The LA 5 is the excess levy capacity. We don't have that number filled in at that point because the information is not all entered into Gateway.
And is, is there like a target date they expect that you'll have it? Is this something that's going to be done very soon?
I hope so, yes. I mean, ideally, you guys sign off on that. And everything is already in there and you're signing off on what the.
Right, but you were hoping to have everything by the 15th before, when we talked last month and you didn't get everything you needed sent to you? Thank you. Do you want to sign that first?
Yeah, oh, it doesn't matter. Are we all going right along this line?
That's fine.
Because it's the way it's set up for three, okay. Is it two separate?
I just signed on that one, yeah.
So we have another meeting, we have a board meeting, so.
Okay, yep, so at this point, there's, having, thank you for the information. There's no further public, or there's no public comment, so.
So did finance have anything for us, or are we all set?
I think you're all set, unless you're certainly welcome to join the meeting, but. Okay, we're going to get an update, so we can tell you.
I met with the financial team this morning, so I can update the board on that information.
Okay, great, all right. Hearing closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a meeting at 6:45 with our financial team and the Finance Committee. Is there something we can, it's only 6:35, so we have 10 minutes. Yeah, but I don't see. I, I was thinking that, but yeah, if, if you don't mind.
Now take five, or what do you want to do?
That's, I'm not sure, that's.
Are we taking five minutes, or no? Why would you talk about it? Describe some paperwork if we are.
Well, I think, let's just, can we just see if Tony comes in and then we can take care of that particular, of item number four? Unless you want to do that afterwards. Doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, I'll grab that, I'll grab that paperwork if we're not going to do it. I think it's going to take more than 10 minutes. I was just seeing if I could look it up on here, but I don't think I can.
John, go ahead Mike, I'm sorry. Yes.
Came in on the tail end of that and I was just wondering, I wasn't sure of the scope of it. But I was also sure that whether you guys were aware of the fact that the Development Authority like five years, six years ago, done a light industrial business park of all this land for North Hatfield Road, which would have been facilitated tremendously by sewer and water coming up West Street. Okay, and I wasn't sure to what extent that was involved. But you, you might want to resurrect that if you're looking for some sort of ammunition, if you will, to support an application for that grant. Because we're talking about, and this, you know, the, the numbers are there.
We could cite that in the letter that we.
Yeah, you might want to pull that out of the file. It's in digital form somewhere. And there's a substantial amount of justification for that kind of utility infrastructure coming up 5 and 10. And the only thing that was holding back, holding that back obviously, was the cost to do that. And if Mass Works is something that might, might apply, that, that grant program, that could really open up the northern end of, of that area significantly for development. And there's a lot of land off of 5 and 10 and North Hatfield Road that's currently zoned by industrial. So it's, it's perfect for.
Great, thank you. That, that was not part of the, the current scope, to be honest with you. It was from the bottom of Chestnut, Chestnut heading south. Because those businesses came forward and actually, you know, showed their, their business plans, et cetera, so. But I, I mean, it, it sure makes sense to, to look at the work that's already been done and see if that can just be added to it and go for the whole thing. Yeah, thank you. So John, why don't we take five minutes, please? And then we'll meet with the, the Finance Committee and the financial team from the town. Thank you, John. Welcome back to the meeting of November 15th. We're here now with the Finance Committee and also our financial team, Town Accountant and Treasurer/Collector and Associate Treasurer. Just to get an update on where we stand with the town's finances as of today. So we've been doing this on a monthly basis. Just getting updates and meeting our current obligations and, and the obligations of making sure the paperwork and records are, are updated and submitted and all those things the financial team do, so. Here they are. I guess I'll start it off by asking a question. So it's, it's November 15th. I think today was the, or this week is the cutoff for having fiscal year 2017 completed, or, yeah, completed.
Yes, reconciled, reconciled.
So, so having said that, I guess I would leave it off to Derek and Laura Lee to just give us the status of where we, we stand to, to date.
Let me tell you where we are as far as, we handed off the fourth quarter to Justin, asking him to help me out on that. He's asked for a couple of things to finish reconciling the fourth quarter. I put down July through March, and whatever was kind of, I didn't have backup for, I had questions on, I put in unapplied revenue. So we have to circle back around, get that unapplied revenue down a little bit smaller than it is right now. Currently, we're about $442,000 in unapplied revenue. Now, let me just, it sounds like a big number, but a lot of that's overstated simply because we're keeping turnovers together. So I think I've explained this the last time. If we have a collector turnover that has 17 receivables and I have a question on one of those receivables, I move the entire 17 and done applied.
So the other 16, we might actually have information on, but because it's part of a larger package, the whole package is sort of on hold, or?
Correct, and I just didn't want to break that up because it's easier to keep that transaction together, to go back to the source document. Month by month, I will say that January and December, I ended up getting sick. So when I was trying to put those on the books over the weekend, I wasn't here to kind of track down the information. And Laura Lee did hand me off some information on my desk. It was just underneath some other paperwork. So I didn't actually have it when I was booking it. So that's why those months are a little bit higher. July is, we actually know that there's only two transactions we have to track down and, and July is reconciled. The other months are a little higher, 40,000, you know, somewhere between 40,000, 150,000. And like I said, January and, and January is actually not bad. It's at 54,000. But then they, they come back down. February is only like 8,000, March is only 3,000.
Okay, thank you. So, so this isn't, so I'm going to ask a question. Is this unusual, or isn't this unusual? And it's just a matter of because we're still in a catching up with so much, it's, it's just. It's not unusual in the accounting world that something like this would happen, I guess is my question. It's just, it's, it seems that much larger because we're, we're still catching up.
We're catching up, and, and right now, ordinarily, we would, as, as we're going through, if we were caught up on a month-to-month basis, the unapplied would, there wouldn't be an unapplied now.
You'd probably know the following month, like next month, you would know from this month what wasn't aligning for whatever reason.
We would carry that as an outstanding item.
Right.
And, you know, expecting it to clear the next month if it was, you know, if it's a timing difference. If that carried for a couple of months, we would know that there was an issue and look into it. But no, there should be no unapplied.
Right.
Unapplied is basically there so that we could keep applying, you know, I didn't have to stop and spend five or 10 hours researching to get a month closed. We just wanted to keep putting the revenue on and circle back around and go through it.
And that's our goal. So we've gone through the whole year of 2017, basically. And now we're in that go back, circle back and find the unapplied.
Correct.
Documentation.
The majority of January and December I have in my office, so I just have to write the journal entries and reclassify it where it should be.
Daryl?
So we are, you are reconciled besides the sun applied through March and then Justin and Bay State are working on fourth quarter?
He had me, yes, he had me research three transactions. I got back to him, so I would assume that he is very close to sending me the files and telling me to put them on the books.
So we anticipate within the next few days or a week, we should have, we should be, except for that unapplied, we should be reconciled for all of 2017?
We're looking at the end of this month.
As far as reconciled to go forth on the tax recap, yes. In other words, we're going to be, the tax recap is not as critical on like the balance sheet. So we need to have revenues as opposed to where those revenues are on the ledger for the balance sheet. So as long as we have all the revenues there, certain classifications, we do need to make sure that they're very close. And we're working on those aspects, but when we have that, we can go forward with the tax recap. Then we need to close the books, which is doing all the closing entries. That's when we'll have the final numbers for all the receivables and produce the financial statement.
That's when you'll do the Schedule A, we'll get free cash and all that. But we should, so we are on track to set a tax, to do the recap, to set a tax rate in December.
Absolutely.
So we can properly send bills out when we're supposed to not be in any, right? So that's a good thing.
Yes, that's correct.
We're looking at submitting for free cash at the beginning of January.
Okay. And that's when all this unapplied and all these accounts are kind of cleaned up.
Everything will be cleaned up.
We're going to, we're going to have to clean up some of those before we get to the, to file the recap. But, you know, we need to get it a little bit closer, let's say. Doesn't have to be exact, but we need to be a little bit closer than where we are today. And then we'll be fine to file the recap.
Right.
Then we need to go and get them exact to file the balance sheets and the financial statements.
Okay. Are we, you know, I still realize there's been a lot of work done by all those involved. Are we also doing our best to stay current with 2018? Yeah, yeah, with 20, yeah, with 2018.
So as far as 2018, I'm on target for having July and August completed for December 1st.
Okay.
So, and I'll be passing off the SOR files to Derek. So we're staying on target with what we have for the 2018 plan.
And that's great because then going forward, you're, it's going to be much easier to look back.
Yes.
Two months ago and say, oh, what happened to XYZ account versus looking back 14 months ago saying, what happened? So.
Absolutely, it's going to be a lot easier. And we now have a process in place. I mean, when you guys first came to us and said, okay, when's this going to be done?
Right.
We didn't have an idea of the process of what we were going to run into as far as problems with transactions. And we have a much clearer picture of what that is now, a much clearer picture of how to resolve it, research it and.
We need to know what the timing is associated to the task now.
We will still be pushing though to get caught up because again, you're saying August, July and August for December 1st.
Correct.
So we still need to catch up with the rest of the current fiscal year.
Foot is clearly still on the accelerator going forward.
It has to be.
Yeah.
We can't, you know, I know we're coming into holiday season, but we still have to keep our eye on the goal and still keep moving forward.
Thank you.
I just heard that we were expecting free cash by January, is that?
To submit it early January.
We'll know sooner than that.
No, sooner than January 1st? No, we won't know free cash before then. Right, that's where, I did report that out, that I had expected we were going to be submitting at the middle of December. That's not the case. And looking back at communication with Justin Cole, he did say the end of December, beginning of February, January.
And on that note, I am meeting with Justin tomorrow at a conference, so if you guys have any questions for him, you know, I can certainly, you know, sit down and draw out those answers for you and send an email tomorrow.
Yeah, I would just want to make sure to Paul's point that we are still on track for early January, getting free cash set and more importantly, having a really solid number so that we don't have to worry about.
Right, capital planning is looking, actually, capital planning is scheduled to meet with the Treasurer and Accountant at their December 5th meeting.
Well, we have the backlog of capital that didn't even get done last year too, so, so anyway.
We will work diligently on getting you that number as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Do we, we don't, not that any of us can predict the future, but we don't foresee or know of any upcoming obstacles to continue moving forward. I know we have some holidays, so there's some long weekends, there's some time off, I get it. But, you know, these are benchmarks that all seem attainable and reachable that we have there. I mean, we've been doing pretty good, sticking pretty close to the dates we've had out there.
Right.
But that January date is huge. I mean, between the Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen and the capital planning, you know, January is when everybody's hitting the ground running, looking to put all the budgets together and that free cash amount is going to, you know, makes a big difference with the things we go forward with.
So just, I just wanted to check, so 2000, this year, July and August are going to be done December 1st? Because I was, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought last meeting in October that we, that we said that July was already done for this year.
I'll be passing those off. Those are the deadlines that I have for those two months.
Right.
So on December 1st, I'll pass that off to Derek.
Right, what Cindy's saying is at the October 25th meeting, you had reported that you were working on July and August and you had expected to wrap August up the end of the following week. Right, I thought those were done already.
December 1st is the deadline and I've been working on my November 1st due date for real estate and water two of those.
Right, but I, like I said, I just thought that we had discussed last meeting that July and August were done already.
No, I didn't, I did not say that they were done already.
That's what I'm asking.
That's what I was working on.
That's why I'm asking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ed, did you have anything to, Cindy, did you have anything else for Derek or Laura Lee?
No, I'll look that date up, but I'm sure.
I would like to meet again in December to make sure we're, I don't know what the rest of the committee thinks, but, to get an update and to make sure, because really it's so important that we're ready for the recap and that, you know, with the holidays, it's going to be a balancing act getting all that done and ready, ready to go.
And then you'll have time to look through this stuff too.
Oh, yes, the light reading.
Gives you four weeks. So Daryl, on those, along those lines, our next meeting is probably going to be that middle week of December.
Right, we're looking at either the 12th or 14th.
12th or 14th, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
I'll be away, but as long as you.
It's going to be the 13th, but you have a conflict, correct?
Yeah, we're waiting to see what these guys can do on the 12th or 14th.
Wait a minute, I want to go with you.
So it'll be that week?
That's fine.
You want to do it the same way, you guys will come in?
I don't know.
Give us a time, 6:30, somewhere in that zone is perfect.
We'll keep you guys in.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike?
Just a quick question on the free cash issue subject. Does that free cash number that we anticipate having in January include the amount that's being retained?
Right.
From the Department of Revenue?
Right, that would be included.
Okay, so all of that, so even that amount is pending, if you will, the timely completion of all of this.
Right.
Okay, and my other question is, have you guys been keeping the Department of Revenue involved in this process? So the.
Intimately.
They are monitoring, they are monitoring Hatfield.
Great, thank you.
They are.
Absolutely.
Anybody from the Finance Committee have any questions or comments? Did Laura Lee or Derek, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
You know, I think we're, I mean, we all know what needs to be done.
And, and your offices themselves are interacting and know what the other one needs? I mean, you know, okay.
Yep, we're sending out, you know, I send out an email of information I need, Laura gets it, comes to my office last night, put it on books.
Great, good, all right. Thank you, thanks for the update. Good job. So before the Finance Committee leaves, we, so the big, the big book you have in front of you.
For light reading.
For light reading. Marlene can probably speak to it, but it's a financial policy manual for the Town of Hatfield that we worked with the Division of Local Services. What they did was took our, our town's existing financial manual and sort of melded it with theirs and updated things and updated information.
Right.
And so it came to the Board of Selectmen, but the Board and Marlene felt, you know, we should get you folks on the Finance Committee a copy as well, just to have, I mean, you know, and share the information with you. We ultimately will review, we haven't, well, I haven't yet, Ed may have and Cindy may have, but I haven't reviewed this yet. So we're going to go through it and then, you know.
Adopt.
Adopt it by section.
Right, right.
And so I guess what I would ask is maybe on an individual basis, if you do have time to at least peruse it, if there's anything that just stands out glaring that you need, you would like an answer to or need clarification of? I mean, we can either, we can either wait to meet in December or if it's some, you know, or you can pop the question to Marlene. If there's just going to be a handful of them, we'll work to get those answers for you and maybe, you know.
Yeah.
It's a lot of reading, there's no doubt about it.
Oh, yeah.
The good news is we're not reinventing the wheel with this. We're just improving it, so that's.
Yeah, it's a well-laid out policy manual and this was the result of Commonwealth Community Compact Grant.
Right.
DOR sat with the financial team and.
Right. No, we can do that and any questions we have individually, we'll just shoot on the Marlene. We give everyone kind of a heads up of what we're thinking and then we can discuss it at your middle of December meeting. If that, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, it's okay with us.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Did you, anybody have any questions about anything? I mean, I think you're as up to date as we are as far as where we stand with.
Right, yeah, we as a board, we're going to slip off into one of the offices. We've got, we're going to need for a few minutes, we've got some mundane things like minutes and things like that to go through, so. So. Thank you for having us and you must be part of this and.
Good morning, Mary or Daryl?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, same to all of you. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Am I wrong or is that what we were told last month, those dates?
That's what I was saying, at the meeting on the 25th, she did say that.
She said she had it done.
She had said July was pretty well done and.
Yep, and she's working on August.
And she had hoped to have it done the following week. She did mention though she had a due date of November 1st for real estate.
I know, but that's, that's going to be every quarter. You know, I mean, that's, you can't use that as, that's every quarter. So absolutely, so there's been no progress on that at all. It's been another month.
I don't have the minute, I don't have the.
Yeah, I took notes on it, that's why I remember because I wrote it, but.
All right, Marlene, we are up to the Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, where are we?
One of which we've knocked off.
So Mass Cultural Council, topic eight, is that where we are at?
Yes, the Mass Cultural Council fiscal year.
Initially, the town receives grant funds from the Massachusetts Cultural Council.
Yes.
And this year, the Cultural Council has been awarded $4,400. And then, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the process, but they have an application process that people submit to their board for arts or various cultural projects. So the state requires the Board of Selectmen to approve the state contract. And Brian, you'll need to sign that state contract, that's late, that's the originals in the signature folder. Attached is a scope of services and budget, so it just sort of is the criteria that's laid out.
Right.
By the state. And actually, the second signature page, I believe, needs to be witnessed by the town clerk.
Right, but I think that's the castle form, yeah, she's here, that's the castle form, I think that's you though, that has to be signed by you. That's who's authorized to sign for them as the administrator or the chief, you or Derek?
Usually it's, oh, usually it's the chair, the Board of Selectmen chair. And I noticed that they have the previous chair pad gone on there.
Right, on the contract, which is this page, that would be the Board of Selectmen. But this is who can sign for the monies. It certifies that you are the chief.
Acceptance of payments.
And we've done two in the past on the, on other ones.
Okay.
You or Derek and so in case somebody leaves, somebody gets to sign to get to accept the money.
We want the money.
Actually, these are usually applied for in October. And I attended the 350th Committee Meeting last Wednesday, on the 8th you were there. And I brought that information to them because they are doing some cultural type things, they may be able to apply for the 350th anniversary for the next couple of years really, as they plan for that, to get some of this.
Good idea.
Don't, do you have to use the money within that fiscal year?
It's, it is a year, but normally when they, when you file in August with the other ones, the EMPs that I do, that it runs till June the following year.
Okay.
Normally, and then by July 31st, you have to have the paperwork back and it's closed.
Okay. All right. If the Board would vote to approve the contract for $4,400, $4,400.
Do we have a motion?
Sure, a motion to vote and accept the Mass Cultural Council's grant for 2018 in the amount of 400, excuse me, $4,400.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Marlene.
The next item is a letter of agreement between the Community Preservation Committee and Open Space Committee. That's for the second phase of the improvements for Smith Academy Park.
The, right, this is what Gary had reviewed.
Well, I'm sorry, this is, I'm, I'm sorry, it's wrong. That is for closing costs to, for the conservation restriction on Horse Mountain. I'm sorry, there, it will be a letter of agreement for the second phase, but this is not for the construction.
This isn't that one.
So you're on topic nine and that was for.
On topic nine.
So it's for the CPA on Horse Mountain.
Community preservation. I thought it was Smith Academy Park.
Okay, and it's been reviewed by?
It has been reviewed by Town Council.
Okay, so is there a motion to sign the?
Approve the letter of agreement.
Approve the letter between Hatfield Open Space and the Town of Hatfield CPA?
Make a motion to approve the Community Preservation Letter Agreement of the CPA regarding Horse Mountain.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye, thank you. Topic number 10, Keno to Go. Be good for you, walk across the street.
Hatfield Market, which is the recent market on School Street that opened up, has applied for a Keno to Go game, and actually, I received education from Linda the other day on how this works.
I had to get my, to get information.
Unless the Board of Selectmen has any concerns or does not support this.
Is Keno to Go, you just get a Keno ticket and you walk out?
No, it's, it's an app on your phone.
Oh, yeah.
So you can buy up to 30 games, walk away from the store, and then check your, your app later, and then if you want, you can go back to the store and get your money or bet some more money.
You don't need to stay there and wait for the numbers to.
Exactly.
Wow, an app on your phone.
It's Keno to Go.
If there is any objection from, from the Board, we're required to submit a written letter to the state.
I don't have any objection.
So this is really? I actually read through it. I know other larger cities have had this for quite some time, or some establishments have had it for quite some time. So, so basically, this is just letting us know they're applying for it, but we're not giving permission or not giving permission. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
If we were against it, the lottery would then say.
Exactly, then they would like to hear from you.
Okay, all right.
Right.
I personally don't have a problem either.
Okay.
Whatever they need to help their business, I guess.
There's no tickets thrown on the ground.
Saving paper.
And you don't have people hanging around the store.
Right.
That's the idea.
Okay, so, so I don't know if we need a positive reply or not, Marlene.
We don't need to, only if you object.
No responses.
If you don't support it.
No news is good news.
We would need to send a letter.
Got it.
The Board would be required to address a letter, right. So you don't need to do anything if, if you're okay with it.
It's like no action, no.
Right. Topic 11?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, we just sort of.
We just, we, yes, actually.
So we are going to review the, so this is the Community Compact Grant, the financial policies that we talked about earlier with the Finance Committee. So we ultimately have to vote on it, but we're just going to take the time.
Correct.
To individually go through the policy ourselves and come up with any questions we may have.
And I'd just like to add that there is a new initiative that I had spoke to at a previous meeting for the next grant round, Commonwealth Compact Grant Round, and I had, the Board of Selectmen has submitted a letter of intent and commitment, this was for a regional, regionalization and efficiency finance director.
Right.
I was notified that the town is not eligible for that type, however, there is another application process, we can apply just as a single town.
Sure.
So I would recommend that we redo that.
I would agree. It's too bad we weren't, you know, chosen, but as part of the larger group, but I, I think it's important to at least have somebody with that financial background.
Are you confident that we have a shot at this one? It wouldn't be the same as when they rejected the first one? Because the state.
I, I, well, and I was pretty optimistic about the first.
Because it just seems to me that.
The original.
We need it more than most towns do right now because of the financial situation, but that's what's preventing us from having it.
And that's why I feel very strongly that we should apply. I don't, there aren't any guarantees.
Well, the only guarantee is if you don't apply, you're not going to get it.
Well, that, you're right.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So I think, what I'm saying is it's certainly worth.
How soon does that one come up? Are we going to be in a better financial picture when this one comes up, where we have a better shot?
Well, my understanding is we can submit this immediately.
So we're still kind of whole, yeah.
But I will find out what the deadline is.
Well, so maybe what we can do is find out the deadline, which is key, obviously, and then in the application exactly, I don't know if you've seen it yet, Marlene, or seen an app, you know, and then find out exactly what they asked for in the application, because we, you know, to Cindy's point, you know, we don't want anything to maybe hold us back. By the same token, we're, you know, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, so, so maybe it's, maybe it's a timing thing as to what they ask and when it's due, and maybe we can, you know, move forward that way.
That's true, yeah, yeah, no, I do understand. Okay.
Here's the contract you were talking about.
I would ask that, so the Board had awarded the project to Almasta, and that was signed, Almasta has returned it. I was hoping to have the contract tonight for the Board to approve and sign, and I had reached out to Almasta today, and they said that they're still waiting to just pull some information together, and as soon as they receive it, it's possible I may, the Board, because we need to get the contract approved by November 25th.
But I mean, when we, last meeting, when we approved this contract, the condition was they were going to.
You awarded the contract.
We awarded at our price, the amount of money that we had.
Right.
Not over what it was.
Correct.
And then they were going to go back and talk to Almasta.
That's right, and they did meet.
And they did meet, and they.
We met last week.
So, so why, I think, well, I don't know.
So is this number going to be any less, I guess, is what you're thinking, like we talked about?
Right, right. It would, it would be.
We didn't sign it, we didn't sign it with the caveat of, we didn't vote on it with the caveat of, but it's got to come down to the maximum of whatever it was, 180 or 190,000 or something.
Right, you, you voted to award the project based on their bid submission.
Right, and Rich was going to speak with them, right.
And, but then, now there's the actual contract that is being drawn.
So we need the real number when it comes back?
Correct.
All right, okay, so why don't we, 25th is next, is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, so.
Well, I'm hoping next Monday or Tuesday.
Why don't you schedule a meeting for Tuesday, or, or Monday, whatever, I would say Tuesday if possible, if Cindy's available, just make it at 1:00 or something, or 2:00, it doesn't matter to me.
It would just be the contract.
Let's get it on the books, and then, then we know it's there.
Okay.
Yeah, I just hate to schedule it for Monday, and then on Monday, we find out it's not going to be until Tuesday, and then there's nothing we can do about it.
Right.
So I don't know what your schedule is on Tuesday. I think we want to stay away from the day before Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Who knows where people are, so. So what happened, do you know what happens if we, for whatever reason, they don't get us the contract by next week? Is it, are we starting over again?
No, no, we could probably file, you know, an extension.
Okay, all right.
Is the, is the holdup the amount, is that?
No, they just needed to reach out to one of their subcontractors to, to get, you know, a number, a firm, confirmed number from them.
And probably, probably a number and maybe the scope, right? So instead of 15 lights, you're going to put in 10, because these five are going to equal this much money, so we're going to lower it that way.
One of the things they mentioned was benches, that maybe the benches.
Right, and they're taking the benches out because they're looking at doing a fundraiser, but they're reaching out to the concrete subcontractor regarding paving.
Okay, so there's a couple people that have to get back to it, okay. See what they all can do as a company, and then put it all together.
Yeah, I talked to Kathy Almasta today.
Okay.
And she said as soon as she receives the information, she'll send it to us.
All right.
And I let her know that we were looking at Monday or Tuesday at the latest.
I would tell them Monday, or Friday of this week, but let's plan on, our meeting on Tuesday. Are you guys available at pretty much any time on Tuesday?
1:00 is good, 1:00 is good.
See what Cindy's schedules.
Okay.
Did you forget something?
Yeah, I'm cold. It's like, I'm going to get cold now, so.
Topic 13.
Yes.
As we plug along reviewing the HR Policy Manual, we're at Section 4, Code of Conduct, and I have reviewed it. I don't have any recommendations other than under Section 4.2, Personal Integrity, and this is applicable to the Massachusetts Conflict of Interest. Employees are required to take the online state ethics education training, so I insert, I recommended that that be inserted.
Okay.
That's additional language to add to that.
I mean, even we have to do that as elected officials.
As elected, but this doesn't apply to the elected.
No, no, I know, but even we have to do that.
But yes, you have to elected, appointed.
Lydia sends us a thing every year to do our thing, so.
Everybody does. And certainly open to any suggestions or further recommendations under Section 4. So does your copy have it in red?
It doesn't, no.
So 4.2 on the first page.
Yeah.
The very last sentence, it says employees are required to complete the online state ethics conflict of interest law education and training. I'm recommending that be added to this.
I don't think it's on my copy.
No, I don't either.
You don't?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I must have, I, you know what, you're right. I printed out this prior to inserting this.
So unless.
So that's my recommendation to insert that.
So unless my colleagues have something, which is fine.
Correct.
I'm, I'm good with that. So everything else is basically as we have it, and we're going to add that sentence about the conflict of interest.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, and I did check, it does coincide with everything under 268-23, I use it from the clerks, so it's very similar, but just not the legalese, I guess.
Right, right.
Which makes it easier to understand, so I think it's good. Covers most of it and leaves, because you can't cover everything, so I think I like it.
I don't have a problem with that. Okay, so we probably need a motion because we're making a change to that section?
Yes.
All right, so I'll make a motion to accept the Code of Conduct, Section 4 of the Human Resource Policy as updated by Marlene. Or submitted by Marlene.
I'll second that, yes, that sounds good.
Okay, so there's a motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Marlene.
You're welcome.
Topic 14, update on the server.
14, quick update on the upgrade of the server. As you know, this was a capital project. That upgrade is pretty well-complete. Part of the upgrade involves migrations with current software applications, Infinite Vision, which is used for AP and payroll, and that was completed last week. The next software application to be migrated over to the new server is the Point, and that, Peregus IT is looking to schedule that in a week. And I believe then the last software application is in the assessor's office. So we certainly did have some bumps throughout the process. I have reviewed those, those issues, and, and I feel those, they were serious, serious enough to be raised. I had a telephone conference with the President of Peregus IT and our Accounts Manager, and they, you know, were very sorry for, for the, the inconveniences, I mean, there were some inconvenience, and you do expect there to be maybe some, some hiccups.
Bumps, yeah.
But, you know, they, they were serious ones.
Yeah, there was more than a hiccup.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff lost, and days of work lost, and everything else.
Right, and it slowed down work, workflow, progress. So they, they are, they are aware that we were not happy with that.
There was just a lot of little things. I came in, just, you know, it wasn't just one thing, it was compounded. I was supposed to be here at 9:00 for them to update mine, which is fine, I came in at 9:00. At 10:10, they told me, oh, we're going to get to you next, just 10, 15 minutes. Well, 10, 15 minutes became like almost 1:30, and I left, you know, and I said, this is here, and then got a call. I left the laptop, I left the door open, I left the password, you know, for the Chief's Office over here. I get a call at 1:30, they need the power cord for the laptop. Now, the laptop's in the bag, the power cord's in the bag, it's the two items in there, you know, and not being, you know, any computer was by any means, I mean, how can you not find the power cord in the same bag with the laptop? You know, it's, it's a computer bag, it's not like it's hidden in a big bag or something, and it was just really a disappointing experience.
And there were lots of those types of things.
A lot, they were adding up.
Just to give you one, yeah, just to give you one example, but.
They were adding up and.
But there was stuff lost, there was, you know, a project I was working on was completely lost. There was, you know, you couldn't work a couple of days on different things, and the computer, and I believe that week, the computer went down four times.
Yeah, it had some big bumps. Of course, you know that the worst email to get, Cindy, right, is from your IT department when they say.
But you can't get them because it's not working.
No, no, here it is, here, there'll be an upgrade taking place this weekend, but it won't affect anything. That's, that's like the kiss of death.
But that, well, that would have been better because they didn't send an email out for people to shut it down. That was one of the, started the problem, there was no emails sent.
They probably should have.
To everyone. It went to some people, but not everyone.
Yeah, all right, well, Marlene, thank you for taking the, the bull by the horns, as they say.
I mean, Peregus is concerned, you know, about how the, the whole thing was handled, and they're handling it internally. It, it just didn't help our relationship because we've already, you know.
We've been, we've had this kind of relationship over the last few years.
Absolutely.
So they're, they are doing something next week? Is that what you said? Another?
They will be, they will do the migration for, for Point software.
So I would imagine that there's lots of eyes on this, not only internally from us and you, but on the Peregus side of things, right? I mean, they, you know, do we know when they're doing it?
They have not set a date to do that yet.
Well, the other disappointment with me is, because you know how I feel about it, is we get their services through the HCOG or the HCG, and that's part of the problem. And there's been a couple instances where, and I know you caught one and had them change it, there was that extra surcharge on some of the service that there wasn't supposed to be, and refused to pay it.
Well, I think the billing's one issue, I, I don't think we can put the Peregus issue of, of the, of the computer issues on, on HCOG.
We're not saving with them, is my point, we're losing valuable dollars, hours, work, the work.
Okay.
And that's, that, that's all I have on that matter.
Okay. So what we haven't addressed yet, because we ran into some timing issues with meeting with the assessors and then with the.
I think we can address it.
We haven't talked about the cleaning contract, so do you want to wait till our next meeting?
I'd like to make some comments on topic one.
Yeah, I did get a text from Tony, he had to leave.
Yeah, that's okay.
So that's, that's why he's not here.
Before, yeah, no, that's fine, before we do that, Cindy.
Tony had a text that he had to leave.
Did you check that Tuesday date? I saw you checked.
Yeah, I had one thing, what time did you want to do it?
Doesn't matter. We're, we're going to need like a half hour, tops.
1:00 you wanted?
So you want to discuss it at the 1:00 meeting?
No, 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 just, he wanted to.
I'm just trying to set the meeting up.
1:00 would be okay.
Because Cindy was checking her phone.
Could you talk, 1:00 Tuesday, right?
Yes.
Yeah, 1:00 is good.
That is okay?
Yeah.
All right, so let's, let's have that post, you know.
Okay, 1:00 next Tuesday.
To do the.
Big Y is at 10, 1:00 will be open, okay.
What? Big Y will be open.
I thought he said Big Y, and then I thought, no, I must have heard him wrong.
Are you old enough?
Somehow I get there every Tuesday and.
Are you old enough yet?
No. So you think I'd be smart enough to stop going on Tuesdays when everybody else is there?
And they're going to get rid of it next month, too.
Yeah, they're not doing the 10% off.
They're ending it in December? That's what I heard. I don't do that.
Happy holidays, customers. Okay. All right, so that meeting will be on Tuesday at 1:00 to discuss the Smith Academy Park. But if you would, just let them know they need to have the information by, you know, Friday if they can, or Monday at the absolute latest. You know, just make up a date. Okay. So the last item on the posted agenda is to discuss the cleaning service contract. So the cleaning service that's currently being used, contract expired, was it the end of September, Marlene? Or, yeah.
Yes, September 30th.
September 30th. But the information on a, the board had not received until a week or two ago, the information from the facilities department as to which company or which companies had applied, which companies were looking to become the next cleaning contract, the next cleaning company for town hall and the surrounding buildings. So we did get that information, finally. And I know we're going to discuss it, but just, you know, to sort of preface it. So there was a request sent out by the DPW department, by the director of the water department. The DPW director was not involved due to a potential conflict which may arise, so he just removed himself from the process. So Tony had sent out requests for quotes, as well as reached out to some individual companies and people that he knew had in the past shown an interest in performing the service. But in this instance, did not report back that they were, that they were basically interested. So three bids came back, or three, yeah, three bids came back or quotes. And they were from MAS Cleaning Service. And I hope I pronounce, this is in response, by the way, to the bid request from the DPW department. Feeley, is that the right pronunciation?
I don't know.
Okay, Feeley Richards.
Sure.
And ServiceNet. So those three companies or individuals had shown an interest and had submitted a quote as to what their yearly fee would be. Since then, by the way, ServiceNet has withdrawn their proposal. So to be one of the, or to be the cleaning company. So we're, at this point, in the discussion we'll pursue. Feeley Richards and MAS Cleaning are the two companies who have submitted bids that, for the board of selectmen to discuss.
Okay, my, I have some problems with the bidding. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter 30B, you have a chief procurement officer. So if a town or governmental agency has a chief procurement officer, either the chief procurement officer or that person's delegate is the one that's supposed to solicit bids. For some reason, that didn't happen. Marlene is our chief procurement officer, Linda's in training to be delegate, and I believe we have one CPO that works for the assistant superintendent. Now, it's, you got to follow Mass General Laws. I mean, I don't think there was any intentional wrongdoing on how it went, but I think departments have to understand, if you have a chief procurement officer, then all the bids should go through the chief procurement officer. The exception to that is if you have like a water transmission project, then the architect takes care of that. If you have contracts with Hampshire Council of Government, which we're a part of, we can jump on those contracts, or if we have a contract with Staples. Now, talking to Marlene, because the correct process wasn't followed, that in itself could be grounds for not accepting any of the bids. So at this time, I'm thinking that maybe we should not accept any bids because I think it's in the best interest of the town. And I have another option that I'd like to discuss. I don't know if it's a time to discuss it, the other option. So first, I'd like to talk about that other option, because I've done some research on it.
All right, yeah, I had, I feel the same way. I'm not, I'm very concerned about the conflict of interest with this. If you look under 268A, Section 1, the conflict of interest law prohibits a municipal employee from participating in a particular matter in which an employee or a member of his immediate family has a financial interest. That's under 268A19A. So you have the procurement end of it, you have the, this is from the Ethics Code, and then the Code of Conduct that we've just gone over. The law covers all municipal employees to ensure, among other things, that their private interests do not conflict with their public obligations. The law is broadly written to prevent employees from becoming involved in situations which could result in a conflict or give the appearance of a conflict. And also under Section 19, it's, this would generally extend to hiring, payroll compensation, supervisory, and/or disciplinary decisions for immediate family members. So coupled with that, I think both of these other things, the Ethics and the Code of Conduct, both send up a lot of red flags that I think it's improper. We have, I don't believe, I don't know if the DPW personnel, either one is, has any training or procurement, you know, certification at all. So I have an issue with that. And also, I was hoping that the representatives, I know Tony got called out, I was hoping the DPW director would be here because I had some questions regarding that for him. But I need an explanation to go any further because there was the whole issue where there was three bids, then there was two bids, then there was three bids. And I spoke with, not, there's nobody in the bus because they're not here, and I'm hoping they can clarify, because I don't want to say, oh, this is wrong or whatever. But I'd like them to clarify how, on the 28th, now, I haven't looked at any of these bids yet. This is still sealed. I didn't intentionally, and I don't know what they are. And until today, I hadn't seen in writing who they were from, okay? And I specifically did that because I wanted to come in open and not know anything as to the specifics of who was bidding on it. But on the 28th, which the day the bids were due, okay, I spoke with representatives from the DPW department that said there was three bids, and they told me which one was the highest, what, in general, what the amounts were. And then the next day, an email is sent saying, no, they only got two.
Well, I think because.
So if somebody can clarify.
Because there wasn't proper training.
Wrong with those times, but I don't think I am because the email is timed and dated. The phone call information is timed and dated. So I don't know what happened there. I'd like that to be explained. Hopefully, it's just a mistake. But that's another, that's another good reason. Right. And the email says there's, they only received two.
I don't know what email you're referring to, Cindy.
The one that was sent from the DPW to the town administrator.
I mean, right now, there's a simple process that I think all departments need to know. It's pretty easy. You, the departments want a widget, they want a widget three feet high, and you want so many of them. You write the specifications, you send it to the chief procurement officer, the chief procurement officer sends it out to bids, and then they come back. Of course, you're in charge of your contract, but that department's supposed to get the specs, but make sure it goes through our chief procurement officer because these are where conflicts happen. When you take part of Chapter 30B and somebody else does it that's not that familiar with it, and takes bits and pieces, these are the problems that happen.
I don't think that happened at all. So let me address personally one question first. I don't see any conflict of interest at all. The person who would have had a conflict of interest has recused himself from this entire process, if you're referring to the director.
Right, and I just read to you why there would be, what the Ethics Code says.
It's the same as when we've had selectmen who have had employees that are relatives in town. They just remove themselves from any sort of conversation, or any sort of voting, or any sort of anything that takes place.
So you don't think there was any pressure, and one day there's three bids, and then the next day there's two?
We have three bids, and I can't, I didn't send the email, so I don't know where's two or three.
Would you like to see it? Do you have it with you?
I'm not, no. What I'm saying.
I can show it to you.
What I'm saying is, one email said there were two bids, according to you, and we have, we had three bids. So then I don't, I don't see what the issue is. Everything comes in and gets stamped, right, in the secretary's office? Is that what happens?
If it were enforced following that protocol, yes.
Right.
Yeah. But like, especially when it comes to a bid. Like when we did the Smith Academy project, all of those bids, I stamped, put on a spreadsheet, timed, dated, everything when they came in.
Right, I had requested copies of the quotes, and what I received were two, and actually.
But there ended up being three.
There ended up being three.
So whatever you were referring to, I think, was.
Right, because one was, one was not found in the mailbox, correct.
Was picked up in the mailbox.
Correct.
Okay. I mean, I don't know if there's a fourth one.
It was found in a mailbox, but how could you tell me the day before that you had three? And then the next day, there's only two, and then you find it 24 hours later in the mailbox?
I can't speak to that.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, I don't know if somebody typed it wrong.
And that's part of the reason everything should go through the chief procurement officer. Then there is no.
Well, if the bid's under $50,000, it doesn't have to go to the chief procurement officer. I'm not saying it shouldn't, I'm just saying it doesn't have to. That's my understanding, but 30B is a long interpretive thing.
It's done all the time.
Well, the bigger thing, but, you know.
It's done all the time. And we wouldn't have had that happen and bring these questions in. And I don't know why the DPW director left.
Because he can't speak, he can't speak to the cleaning service.
No, not, well, not regarding just that. He usually gives an update when he's here. I'm not sure why he left.
Because we were going to discuss the cleaning service as item number four. That's why we did that, so that's why he left.
And there wasn't going to be any DPW update, like.
He gave the abatement and the, or five.
No, that was, that's not the update.
Route 5. Cindy, that's what under DPW director report. That's what's on the agenda.
Yes, it is. He covered those on the agenda. But I noticed there was no report today, so I was going to ask him why there wasn't. Because I had to.
I don't know what report you're referring. You mean an update on projects, you mean? Is that what you mean?
All right.
I just don't know what.
No, okay, no, let me skip, let me just go back. I won't even bring that one up. I won't even bring that one up. I do have some for old business, but.
Well, we get to old business though.
Yeah, no, no, I want, like I said, I do have old business for later. I don't want anybody to leave, but, all right. All right. I'm just.
Put the warrants, if you don't mind. It can be signed, sorry.
What's that? Yes?
Are you?
Okay. What I want to do, because you keep telling me you don't know what I mean, and you don't understand, or whatever. Okay, bids had to be in on 9:00, 9:28 in the morning, 9:28:17, okay? I believe it was 9:00, right?
Actually, they had, I think it was 2:00.
2:00, thank you. 2:00, 14:00 in the afternoon. At 14:43, I'm told, they received three bids, okay?
Yeah.
The next day, do you have that email right there? I'll give you the time. The same party on 9:29 emails the town administrator. That's where the 9:00 came in, I think, right?
Right, so Friday at noon time, I sent an email.
Okay, so Friday approximately noon time, there's an email that says two bids came in. So if three bids came in at 14:43 the day before, and now he's saying that only two bids came in, how can that be?
Maybe he typed it wrong, Cindy.
That's what I said. That's what I said to you. Did I say to you, I hope this is an error? Yes, I did.
You just sat here and said, why were there three? Then there were two, then there were three.
And I said to you twice before that, that's why I'm writing it down.
Well, I can see, it's a paper's big enough.
Because, okay, good. Because I said to you twice before that, I hope it's a mistake. I hope somebody can explain this. It's too bad Tony left. I'm sorry the DPW left.
And I think what I said was, and we ended up with, after the 29th, with three bids. So I don't understand your point.
Okay.
If this was a typo, if this was a typo, if this was a typo of two.
Are they listed that was the email?
And we ultimately ended up with three. We're back where we started on the day that they were supposed to be submitted. That's.
But this one says they just found it. It was lost in the mailbox. So how could you have three the previous day at 2:00 if all of a sudden I just found it at 12:00 the next day?
Get them in here to the next meeting to have the conversation.
And I hope it's a mistake, but I'm saying, if everything.
Sure it is.
Like the law says that, goes to the chief procurement officer, we don't have 15 hands in the pot doing it, and everything is streamlined.
Well, there's one hand in the pot doing it, not 50, but.
Point made. So we wouldn't even have that problem at all with those concerns if it was done that way. Now, previously, it had been done that way. And I think you had concerns that Marlene had a lot of work.
I do.
And gave it to the DPW director, is my understanding.
Well, because it was actually a request for, and based off of a, if I'm not mistaken, I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, but off of a suggestion that had been sent to them as, here's what you want to look for when you're doing this request, because we did one last year, you know.
But why partially through? Would it be taken from the town administrator? I don't understand that.
Right, Phil had asked me to just send him this scope of services that I had solicited last year.
Right.
There's no, there's no smoking gun here. The idea is, the DPW director is the facilities manager. Facilities manager, collectively, we've agreed that we're getting a new service to replace the existing one. Sent out the bids, and the bids came back. The DPW director, for trying to avoid any potential conflict of interest, because a relative had worked here in the past, just removed himself from being part of the bidding process.
But he should have said, let's go through the chief procurement officer to make sure it gets done right.
Absolutely.
If he thought in any way there was a conflict, he should have said, make sure we do it right. And that wasn't done. And that's why I'm saying, I'm not accepting any of these bids because it didn't follow.
Ed, that's fine.
The first time the bids were sent out, all the information was not complete.
That's fine, we can rebid it. As I said, it was more of a, there's enough on what was happening, but we can do it any way anybody wants. That part's fine.
Tony is good doing water treatment. He should be doing, I mean, that's what he was hired for. He wasn't hired to do procurement stuff. I mean, I don't want to set up our workers to fail. And you set up your workers to fail when you, we give them responsibilities that they're not familiar with or haven't had training in. So I think it's wrong to make sure. And as far as the DPW director, maybe we should be looking at his scope of work because I think he's pretty busy. He's always out and about, checking this and checking that. So maybe that should be a future meeting to look at, are we overburdening him with all this other stuff, too? That's all I'm saying. So, I mean, I don't want our workers to fail, and by doing it this way, we're setting them up for failure, because we wouldn't be having this conversation if the processes were followed. That's all.
And one question I had, if anyone else remembers, three meetings ago, I believe it was, that, I believe it was the town administrator that brought up, why don't we have an employee do that? Okay? For years and years, we had a janitor here. Frank Goddick, Roland, it was years and years, and the place looked great. The place looked great. Okay, we discussed that, and we said, yes, we should consider that. And then all of a sudden, it was a service again. And there's been input, and we've gotten input from other offices in here, and basically, they're saying, if we had a janitor here, okay, you would have a lot better, cleaner building, you'd have a lot more communication, and they could do other things. Right now, a service comes in, they mop the floors, they clean the bathrooms, and that's pretty much it. If somebody needs a light bulb changed, they have to call the DPW. If they're busy, it doesn't happen, that change. They have to call the DPW if there's no toilet paper in the bathroom. They have to get someone separate to shovel the walk. That was all covered by a janitor, and everything was done, and the place looked great. You come in here now, it's basically, and there's been several complaints over the last few years of the two services that they've had, and it just doesn't look good. This is a new building.
I'd like to follow that up. I've done some number crunching with Marlene, looking at possibilities for what you're paying for now. You could actually have a person, 8:00 to 2:00, that does all those services. In addition to that, they would do the ramp, keep it clean, clean the windows if you needed, help set up election thing, help the COA. They could talk into Jane and Marlene. You could have it set up where they come in at 8:00, they do vacuuming before people They do vacuuming before people come up here. Council of Aging has all their activities in the morning. They have lunch afterwards. They could do all the cleaning down there. They could help with Council of Aging set things up. And looking at the numbers, right now, what you're paying for, then you pay somebody to clean the lamp. Then you pay somebody to clean the windows. So it's actually cheaper, and they get ownership. They actually care about the building. They care about the people here. And if you get the right people, it works, because right now, the way it's working is, Marlene is sort of taking care of the stuff upstairs, and Jane is taking care of stuff downstairs. So I would strongly suggest that Marlene and Jane are on the hiring committee, because they know the person they need. It's a six-month probation. You're not locked into a one-year contract. If the person doesn't work out, you let them go. We're going to have construction starting. And then you can take that person, instead of the cleaning business, saying, "Okay, we can't do anything." You can always say, "Hey, the library needs a little bit of help. That building needs a little bit of work. The windows need to be cleaned." So when Frank Bunk was here, this place sparkled, and it's a jewel of our town. We put a lot of money into this building. We should maintain it right. One thing that I do know, my very first week on the board, is I got a lot of complaints about cleaning service for the town hall. The Council of Aging felt like nobody was taking care of it downstairs. And that's why, because I think it's cheaper in the long run, you're going to get ownership, and the numbers sort of match up. We're in the budget of what you're presently paying. So that's my speech.
And we discussed that three meetings ago, and we said, "Yes, let's look into a", you brought it up, "One single employee to do that", and the communication, we keep complaining about communication. And when there's complaints, in fact, when was it, last month, I think, you received it from the current cleaning company, and they kept saying they could not reach the facilities manager. They kept leaving messages and calling, and we're not getting a call back. You'd have somebody in here who would find out the individual needs. If you have a company coming in at night, they don't know the individual needs for each room or what needs to be done, or what's not done, or what's not satisfactory.
Right. I don't know how they can, you know, just doing a little bit of a devil's advocacy here. I don't know how they can, you know, a lot of the cleaning that takes place are in the offices themselves. So if people are in the office, I don't know how you can vacuum and go move around and do certain things that you can do at night when the offices are empty, right? Because you're not interrupting the employee.
Well, Frank Bunk did a great job when he was here.
You know, I don't know who any of these people are. You guys have been around a lot longer than I have. I'm just saying, you know, the idea, I believe, from the facilities manager, who, by the way, determines or does the hiring, not the board selecting.
But again, the facilities manager...
If we're going to add an employee to the DPW, I'd rather have somebody that can plow and cut grass and do things instead of push or mop from 8 to 12, from 8 to 2.
The facilities manager can't even comment on this, because he has a conflict.
Right.
And if...
No, he can if it's not about...
And then you're going to have...
A particular...
I'd rather have it here under us...
Which is about everything.
Or under Marlene to take care of cleaning. Why pay all this money and constantly have problems? Why pay all this money when you can get somebody between 8 and 2? It opens up the options for people that have kids in school. So it opens up your pool even more, besides just, you know, people that are retired. They get a good person in here. It's not that we're adding an employee. You're, as far as cost-wise, as far as money, you're spending actually less, and you're getting more services. So I don't see how the facilities manager, I'm not sure if the facilities manager is available to oversee the contract, because every time I come down here, facilities manager's gone to either the garage or he's a hands-eye, or working on different things. So, I mean, it's just not working.
It worked for how many years? 20 years, at least, that I'm aware of, 25 years? And I don't understand why it changed, and now there's all these problems with the change. What's the difference? You know, it worked fine for 20, 25 years at least. The last few years, that we went to a service, it did not work out well. So in my opinion, we need to go back. I don't know why it changed. If it wasn't broke, don't fix it.
Why it changed either. So you've got to figure out, if it goes to a town employee, you've got to figure out the number of hours, the wage, and benefits.
Well, what we're calculating is 30 hours a week.
Yeah.
And we're calculating Marlene ransom numbers with benefits. You're still under slightly what the cost of the cleaning services are. In addition to that, you're also adding the ramp, which the DPW now won't have to do. You're adding cleaning some of the windows, which doesn't have to be outsourced. You're adding setting up at election time, which the cleaning service ain't going to do now. You're also adding possibly some work at the library, because I think they're requesting two to four hours periodically, right? You've got your emergency management building, so you definitely, I mean, and Marlene ran some numbers. Do you have those numbers that you ran at? This is at 30 hours a week. This is 8 to 2.
That was a few weeks back, when I met with Brian and Phil. I had some numbers with me. So I was looking at an hourly range of 1589 an hour to 1775. I had looked at what the school department pays their custodians. So I thought roughly $16 an hour, because we were talking about this facility, or that was my recommendation, if we were to hire a custodian in this facility, the emergency services and possibly the library. At that time, I had inquired with Eliza if she was interested, and she said she may be interested in a few hours. So I was factoring, you know, I was looking at 40 hours for this building, emergency services and the library. And 40 hours may be too much. I, even 30, I'm thinking it would be more than 30 anyway, but, you know.
It could be.
If it's something the board wants to consider, we can certainly, you know, look at a 30-hour position to start. So anyway, at the 16... So I was looking at about $33,000. That was before benefits. For a 40-hour employee at $16 an hour, roughly $33,200, I believe.
Yep.
The last contract was what, 40 grand?
We're paying $35,361 right now.
And you're getting basic services. You're not even getting the ramp cleaned. You're not getting the windows cleaned. You're not getting the library done. You're not getting a lot of stuff. You're just getting basic stuff.
I've gotten at least three emails, I think, on rod of toilet paper again, or the light bulbs again. I've got at least four emails on those. I think everybody else has too.
You're receiving emails?
But if somebody was here to do them, yes.
It'd be done.
Complaints in the building. If somebody's here, yeah. You know what the needs are ahead of time. And you're here all the time. You're not coming in for a couple hours at night. Because how many hours does the service do, do you know?
It's not based on hours.
It's not based on hours, yeah. But again, you're getting a lot more hours for it, because I believe they do, could just come in for a few hours in the evening. So to have somebody here 30 hours is at least double.
Right. They come in Monday through Friday, and they're here in the evenings.
Is there six hours of work a day for someone to do? Really?
For just this building?
Yeah.
I don't think six hours.
That's 30 hours a week.
Well...
So part of my point is, if we're going to hire, if we're going to hire somebody, an employee, I'd rather have somebody, a hired benefited employee, out being able to do town-wide things. That's how I'm looking at it.
Well, she mentioned this building.
You know, if there's a 30-hour employee here, I mean, you know, we can come up with enough activity, you know, enough things for the person to do. That's fine. But it, you know, it's just, it's not that big a building to use up six hours a day. I mean, how many times can you clean a window or mop a floor? That's all. I think we need a bigger...
She said also the public safety in the library, though. That's three venues.
Right. I was just going to say, besides this building, then emergency services. The police department has expressed...
Just the police department?
No, yeah, right. They're not interested.
And fire.
But fire, I think, would, the training room, they would like to see the floors cleaned, mopped, and the bathrooms cleaned.
And the library is requesting some assistance too. And the COA is, I mean, you've got all that traffic in the morning, and then the afternoon, you've got all...
The library's particularly interested in somebody during the spring and summer grounds. They just don't really have people to maintain the outside.
But even for that many...
The basic maintenance, the DPW should be doing that, cutting grass, and if that's, I don't know what they're referring to. I mean, that's a town building. That's what the DPW should be doing. The library is one of those buildings that they should be taking care of, for sure.
But even with 30 hours, if we're getting more services for less money, it still makes sense.
30 hours, do they have to pay benefits?
Yes, over 20.
Anyways, that's my thoughts.
Mine too.
It'll sold 30 hours, if I did the math correctly, is about $26,000 a year.
Correct.
Plus whatever benefits, you know, whatever the cost for the benefits are, and at 40 hours...
Forty, I had, at $16, I'd come up with $33,200 or something.
Yep. Plus, you know, plus...
With benefits, right?
Plus benefits.
That's around 33.
So I would say, yeah.
Which is still under what you're paying.
Still less, and you still get more services.
And you get more services.
You know, and I'm wondering if there's not an option C, and I don't know what that is. And I'll tell you why I'm saying that, is we're about to enter a construction phase in this building. So I don't know. Whether it's 30 hours, or 40 hours, or 100, I mean, I don't know how much work somebody, whoever it is, is going to be able to do in this particular building come spring.
Well...
I don't know if we can do a partial...
To me, even more with the mess, because when they try to put the cables through the offices downstairs, it was a huge mess, and the DPW had said they were going to come back and clean it up, and they didn't.
The cleaning service ain't going to come more than once. You may have, if you have a town custodian, they may have to come a couple times to clean up, because as much as they try to protect areas, I mean, we went through a billion dollars' worth of construction on campus. And I'll tell you, the janitors are busy.
There's more when the construction's going on.
And then even if the area's blocked off, now you can send a janitor over to the library. You can send a janitor over there. You can have the janitor go do the windows, do the ramp. I mean, the cleaning service will come in and say, "Oh, we don't have to do anything tonight. It's all blocked off. See ya." So, I mean, it's how you look at it.
I just thought, you know, they had mentioned...
An option C?
I just thought of Kyle's having to clean, basically clean out his entire office. I don't know if any of you have been down there, but that is...
A million years' worth of documents.
It is a million years' worth of documents and papers and everything else. That could be a full-time job for somebody for like a month, really easily. So I'm just thinking, okay, so how many boxes of, look at Derek's, some boxes of files there are. I don't know how much moving or saying that everyone's going to have to move. Well, I know I'm not a heavy lifter, but you're kind of, you know, asking a lot of folks to be lifting these heavy file boxes. If we could get someone in that could assist in that, not just cleaning, but also...
Relocating.
We should probably get a moving company to do that, or some sort of a...
Yeah, I don't know, but it's a lot.
Your point, that is, and I can tell you from experience, when the chief and I moved over to the public safety building, we used a hand truck. We moved everything ourselves, the bookcases, everything. And the cleaning service came in and yelled at me and wanted to know who filled up that trash can. So I think the janitor would have more, a janitor here would have more invested, you know? Never asked for any help to move. We moved it all ourselves, but still took heat for filling up the trash can and stuff we weren't taking.
Henry Shabowski was a janitor here. He was doing...
Yes.
He was also the chief. So it was part-time janitor, part-time...
Part-time police chief. Oh, my God. Wow. That's right. And if it's too many, well, you'd want to start at less hours if you considered 20, but I don't think 20's going to be enough. I think it needs to be 30, but...
Do we want to revisit us at our next meeting at 1 o'clock?
I just think that part of the job description has to include the ability to lift boxes over 50 pounds.
Usually over 50 pounds, plus work off a ladder to change a light bulb. I mean, you've got to incorporate that stuff, yes.
So I was a little bit like, okay, that's, this job description I could do, but like the boxes...
And that did come into, it was one of the trash cans that the service couldn't...
Well, currently, if an office needs something moved, and periodically, they do. DPW is contacted, and they take time out of their day to come in and...
Right. So now you're using DPW, and you're, instead of them doing what they're supposed to be doing. And that's what happens with the ramp. That's what happens with shoveling. That's what happens with some other stuff around here. I mean, even to put up a poster, you've got to get DPW. You had a person here, they could put the poster up for you.
I mean, it just, I mean, what is the problem with that? We should try, going back, trying it for a year, because you're going to pay less and see how it works. I don't know. I just know that there's continual complaints on how cleaning service works on this building, and there has been for what they tell me the last few years. So it's a, if we go back with a cleaning service, those complaints are going to continue. And you know they are, so...
There's a couple offices that don't have the cleaning service clean their offices for security reasons.
Yes. There's been some other issues that I was informed of that... Anyways.
Unless you require a cleaning service, and I don't know that they would do that, anybody would do that, but unless you require a cleaning service to perform a certain number of hours daily, or late afternoon, evening.
It wouldn't matter. I still think that defeats the purpose of what we need.
Well, you could get a cleaning service during the day. Just say, "These are the hours."
Right.
I mean, I think that part, this was before I was on the board, I believe, part of it was, and I don't know this, but I would assume that part of having them come in afterwards were because people were complaining at the time that the cleaning service was trying to clean while they were doing their work.
No, that's, those are the complaints I got.
No, no.
No.
Not now they weren't. They could have been back then, though, is my point, as to why it went to a nighttime thing.
Yeah, but you look at the size of an office. It's not going to take you more than 10 minutes to vacuum an office, if that. And if it's that noise that bothers, I can't imagine any other noise, except any place, if they strip the floors or wax them once a year.
I don't know. I worked in an office my whole life, and nobody ever vacuumed or cleaned while I was sitting there taking calls from 8 to 5. That's how offices work.
I worked in an office where they did, so.
Yeah.
And it was fine. They came in, they vacuumed.
We were on the phone with customers, but, you know, whatever. I'm just, again, I'm pointing out other aspects of what we've all have for our own individual backgrounds and exposure, so...
At least we're a board that can agree to disagree anyways.
That's how it's got to be. It's the only way it's going to work. It's the only way it's going to work. We're going to agree sometimes, and we're going to disagree sometimes. That's all.
We're all human.
That's okay.
I think. I hope so. I don't know. Kind of bionic limbs right now. I'm not quite human.
Well, so obviously, there's no movement on this now, so... I mean, the only thing I can say, Cindy, to one of your earlier comments, is the three to two, back to three, is I don't think anybody other than the person who sent the email can answer that question for you.
And that's why I hope they were here, so they could explain, because I just want it to be wrong, you know?
But he had to leave, but, you know, so... But we need to get moving on this.
Yes, we do.
Because whether it's Tuesday or tonight, I mean, we need to, we've got a company working currently without a contract, so...
Especially with the messy weather coming and...
Yes.
Every day, you have somebody throw ice melt, all that other stuff.
That's, so, why don't we have this as a...
The only thing they're going to do outside is throw the ice melt and make sure it's shoved, you know?
Why don't we put this on for, if it's agreeable with these guys, for Tuesday, Marlene, along with, so it'll be the contract for Smith Academy Park and discussion about cleaning service at, well, town hall predominantly, but town building.
So do you want to go put, to be in bid?
I think we'll discuss that on Tuesday.
They're saying they want to discuss the cleaning contract.
In case there's changes that, that come.
Okay, so do we just agree to disagree then, and move on?
Oh, for this topic?
You're going to follow up. You're going to have further discussion next Tuesday.
No, I think Cindy has something else she...
Oh, you're looking to see if we're all set with that. Okay.
So yes, that's it for the agenda. So is there, so is there any old business?
Yes. Marlene handed this to me on the way in, so that's why it's not on there. This was what we discussed about the car that was damaged out back.
Yep.
The estimates and the costs, or not the estimates, the actual costs, okay? So present that to the board to look at. I just got it. I didn't read the whole thing, because she handed it to me on the way in.
You know, we're going to look at the dollar amount first anyways, right? Okay. Oh, that's much better than, I think, the way this was starting off. Yeah, so right here, right?
That and that.
What?
The one on, the 80 up here, and plus the 91.
No, I think, I think that's both.
The other one. Okay, all right, yep, okay. I knew there was two.
Okay, so...
I haven't read it yet.
All right, so.
I'll make a motion to give her a check for that amount.
Are we, I'll second it for discussion.
For discussion.
Okay, so all I would say is, I don't have a problem with that. But are we going to try to get this, like, is it worth trying to get this amount of money from the?
Contractor.
Yeah, from the contractor? Or just do this now and send a letter and see what happens to the contractor?
Why don't we, well, my opinion is, we say yes on it, we ask the facilities.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
The DPW director, what he, you know, where he wants it to go, here or there.
Okay, so a motion made and seconded to reimburse the employee for the damage done to their car with the pay being outback? Is there any further discussion?
No.
No, I mean, I do like the idea we can pay the employee for the damage to the car.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Go back after.
See if we can get it.
Reimbursed.
Back after the.
So it's under $100, for those of you on TV who were wondering, but, so that's good. I didn't know where that was, I didn't know where that was heading when I saw the original pictures. Any other old business?
Okay. So we're going to ask.
Oh, sorry.
Facilities director to reach out to the contractor?
Yes, please. So all those in favor? Did I already say that? I didn't say that?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye. Yes, so we want to reimburse that.
Sure.
Ourselves.
And then have the DPW see if you can get reimbursement from the contractor.
Okay.
Yep.